The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mr. Al.
Here.
Mr. Bystall?
Mr. Carson?
Here.
Mr. Frye?
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mr. Porter?
Here.
Mrs. Rowe?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Woll?
Here.
For the record, Mr. Bystall did reach out to me and indicated he would not be present. And I also, I have a letter to be read to whom it may concern. Please accept my resignation from my position on the school board at Southmoreland School District. My last day will be effective November 13th, 2019. This resignation comes with deep regret as I have to resign due to health issues. This opportunity has given me great insight in the care that is provided to our students and families in our community. I am very thankful to have served with great school board members who have the same focus on caring for our community. Thank you for all the support. Sincerely, Charles E. Frye. I would ask that if you would please consider keeping Mr.
Um, I did want to mention, we had an executive session for personnel before we came in. Citizens comments?
I have none.
Minutes, minutes of the following board meeting?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the October 10th, 2019 discussion meeting and the October 17th, 2019 voting meeting minutes.
Account, fund account check summary?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the October 2019 fund account check summary.
Board summary report?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the October 2019 board summary report, general fund. The board will be asked to approve the September 2019 treasurer report.
Do we have any discussion on these? Moving on, um, board reports, superintendent information?
I do have a couple things. I have made it a practice that at three o'clock, 3:30 on Tuesdays, I, uh, I do, I close any new information for board docs and then I release that information. Uh, there are, there have been occasions when things have come up. So, uh, for the agenda next week, and I do believe that I, I have a responsibility to let the public know of anything that might have significantly come up, uh, after I have closed board docs. Uh, next week, to the agenda, I am going to add a debt resolution for our current bond refinance. Uh, and there is the possibility, we will need to schedule a voting meeting for December 9th, and I'm sure Mr. Patonic will be elaborating on that in further detail. But I, I would like to just give the public heads up that there have been things that occur from the time that, uh, board docs is released until the, the meeting, and I, I will be adding those pieces to, uh, the next agenda. That's all.
Solicitor information?
Picking up on what Mr. Mashin just mentioned, um, the way the timeline is set forth for the, with the financial advisor for consideration of refinancing, uh, the 2012 and/or 2013 bond issues. They have communicated, uh, to us that, to Mr. Marnell, Mr. Mashin, myself, um, they have been seeking quotes from banks, uh, for the 2012. And, um, they have those, and, uh, for 2013, I believe, will be coming in this coming Tuesday. Um, their request is that the, uh, and they will have information available at the November 21 voting meeting. So their request is that at that meeting, the board make a decision as to whether to seek the funds upfront, the savings upfront, rather, or whether to spread it out, um, so as to smooth out the increases and keep it relatively equal to the remaining life of the new issuance. So that would be the big decision for that night. The debt resolution is a different resolution, and that would occur after that. And that has to be specially advertised for at least three and not more than 30 days. So that will push that over into December for consideration by the school board in December. Um, we, uh, Mr. Mashin, Mr. Marnell, and I, uh, in light of the resignation by Mr. Frye, we're trying to figure out the, um, combinations of activities that, um, you might need to do in the month of December with meetings. So the first thing I wanted to do was to explain tonight, um, the possible procedure for filling the vacancy. And this has been caused by resignation. Um, the, a resignation, um, is not effective, uh, insofar as the body is concerned, until it's made known to the public body and accepted. Um, this isn't a voting meeting, and even if it were, I'm not sure that it would solve that many timing issues that I'm going to be talking about. Uh, so that would be next week that you would vote to accept the resignation. At that time, um, and this will be in the, uh, board docs, um, Tuesday, um, for you to consider also Thursday, the 21st. Past procedures have been, um, whenever Mr. Levi Miller resigned and was replaced ultimately by Mr. Frye, and when Mr. Benz resigned, ultimately replaced by Mr. Porter, uh, the school board follows the procedure of directing that there be a public advertisement, uh, usually in one or two newspapers, The Courier and, uh, I believe, The Independent Observer, and that you set deadlines, uh, for the receipt of the necessary paperwork, um, which I'll explain in a minute, and for a voting meeting at which to, um, receive presentations by the potential nominees and to vote. So the problem is that under the Public Officials and Ethics Act, um, you're supposed to have a statement of financial interest filed at least 10 days in advance of the governing body making the appointment. Um, you, in the past, we've requested a, um, letter of interest and a resume. So you're picking both a deadline for the receipt of those documents and another date to be a, um, public voting meeting date to consider those candidate, those nominees and to vote on them. So, um, I handed out to the board tonight a revised, slightly revised version of the kinds of resolution that we've done before. Um, it's substantively the same. I thought I saved a couple of words, so I'm not sure that I did for the advertisement, but tried to include the necessary, um, information so that the potential interested person or persons would have it. And, um, it's calling for the adoption of a deadline. Uh, the first one is to set a voting meeting date, so that has to be more than 10 days out. And then the body of the advertisement calling for, um, citizens of good moral character, being a qualified elector, at least 18 years of age, and a resident of the district for at least one year, may seek but not are, but are not guaranteed to be a nominee and voted upon by the school board. Now, what that means is that someone who wants to be nominated by a board member would follow this procedure. Um, it doesn't guarantee that they would be nominated. That is still up to, uh, at least one board member to nominate, uh, the person. Um, to seek, as we have in the past, a written letter of interest, a resume so that you would get information about their qualifications and, uh, interest in the community, and a completed signed statement of financial interest for the preceding calendar year, which in this case is 2018 because 2019 is not yet over. That has to be filed with, um, the school board, um, secretary's office, all of which are to be mailed and received by, and then I said, the superintendent's office on a particular day. And that is what you still need to decide next week. Uh, the secretary then would supply copies of the information to the board members, and, um, then on the date selected, uh, there would be an opportunity for the nominee, potential nominees, to make a five-minute, or if you decided you wanted more, in the past, I think we went with the five minutes, to discuss either their qualifications and their, and/or their positions on, uh, school board issues. Um, now, the member chosen theoretically, uh, if present, that, well, they would be present, um, they could, uh, be sworn in. And, um, so immediately start to participate on that night, and then that plays into some of the other things I wanted to bring to your attention. The person would serve in this case, although I phrased it more generally, uh, until the, um, December reorganization, the first Monday in December of 2021, which is following the fall municipal election. Um, any person who is that person or any person interested would still have to run in the spring primary, and that's a separate political process. The school board doesn't have anything to do with that per se. The secretary would notify the boards of election for both Westmoreland and Fayette County of the existence of this occurrence. Uh, in this case, it's probably not going to make too much of a district difference because it works out that Mr. Frye's term in office would have been also that same, his remaining time would have been that two years. Uh, and then to advertise within The Courier, The Independent Observer at least once, and continuously on the Scotty Channel and the Southmoreland website until the deadline for receipt of the documents described above, and then authorizing the treasurer, treasurer to pay for the advertisement. Um, I've also given you, um, which you could go on next week, um, a procedure to follow as we did in the past, and that would be under opt, I present two options, and last time, last two times you followed option one, and I would recommend you continue to do that. Um, the presiding officer would, first of all, the secretary would publicly announce the name of each person that submitted their documents, and if there would be any need for a legal ruling about, uh, any, the propriety of them, that would be done. The, um, people would be given an opportunity to present to the board. Uh, then the presiding officer would, um, open the nominations such that a board member, and it only requires one, to make a nomination. Uh, and there could be more than one person nominated, and then you would proceed to have an election as you do at a reorganization meeting. Uh, and spelling out the efforts to continue trying to vote, to select someone, um, and providing for recess, to, for people to gather their thoughts, uh, and continue voting or to ultimately declare a deadlock if you could not. Uh, the second option is to, really, somebody makes a motion, and the first motion gets voted on, and if it gets five votes, that's it. Uh, sort of a, a version of, of football sudden death or overtime, which creates a real disadvantage, obviously, because, um, you know, you have everybody clamoring to get their nomination in first, uh, can make for some awkward, uh, situations. Um, but I presented it there because it's been part of the package before. Now, the complications are that you appear to, you have to have a reorganization meeting, and it has to be December 2nd. It appears from information from the financial advisor that to continue to hold the quotes for the bond rates, not the bond rate, but the bank loan rates, I'm sorry, that have already been received, that that needs to be done no later than December 9th. Um, there's an additional period that has to occur, um, for potential objections, uh, before you can get ultimately to a closing, and I think they're anticipating a closing in, um, early January 2019. So there needs to be a meeting night to adopt the debt resolution. Um, based upon, uh, timeline that I've submitted to the board, um, if you want to have some discussion and some presentation of information in December about a preliminary budget, then the choice is whether to have that coincide with one of these other meetings or be a separate meeting. And the reason I'm bringing this up is that we have a extremely early schedule this year in which, um, December, I'm sorry, January 9th is the deadline for opting out. And if you don't opt out, to, of the Act One, um, requirements that you stay within your index, you have to promise that you're going to stay within the index, um, or do the necessary advanced advertisement for a preliminary budget voting meeting, which then would be on the 29th of January. If you move back to January 2nd for a public meeting and do it on that night, then, um, obviously, you would have, it's not obvious, but the, um, 23rd appears to be the likely night for voting on a preliminary budget, but you still have to opt out either on the 2nd or the 9th. Taking all of that into consideration, um, then, at the regular meeting on December 21, um, after acknowledging, after accepting the resignation and acknowledging the existence of the vacancy, um, you could vote on the resolution to do the advertisement and determine the deadlines for the receipt of a statement of financial interest. Now, the problem here is that if it is desirable to have a Mr. Frye's replacement participating, uh, as much as possible in these new decisions, which are significant decisions, um, then we're working in with a lot of constraints here. Um, December 2nd doesn't work out to have time to have any kind of advertisement and a statement of financial interest filed by an interested candidate to have the reorganization meeting on December 2nd vote to replace the new member. So then, if you look at, um, I already, okay, I mentioned December 9th being the deadline for the debt resolution. The school offices are closed from Wednesday, November 27th at noon until Tuesday, December 3rd, even though the reorganization meeting is Monday night, the 2nd. So to receive a statement of financial interest and a letter of interest, um, to vote on December 2nd, there's no time for the advertising and the documents to be due because they would be due the next day, Friday, November 22nd, and there would be no public advertising, which would make the whole process, um, short-circuited. So if you stretch it out to December 5th, that is a Thursday, which has typically been meeting nights, uh, and have a meeting, special voting meeting that night, which is the same week as your reorganization meeting, so you have two meetings that week, um, then the doc, the filing deadline for the documents, uh, becomes Monday, the 25th. December 5th could be an acceptable, uh, debt resolution night, um, so you could possibly, if you wanted to, combine those, uh, provided you decide this on the 21st. Um, I don't know if monthly bills would be in to make that a productive meeting for a regular meeting for that month. If you go to Monday, the 9th, that is the last night for adopting the special debt resolution. Theoretically, if you voted that night and chose a new member, that new member could participate in that decision-making. You could also appoint, you would then have a full board and could appoint members of the negotiating committee for the three different entities which are coming up, which are the teachers' union, um, SEIU, and the, uh, group to meet with the Act 93 administrators for a new Act 93 plan. Um, now, that would make the filing deadline Wednesday, November 27th at 11:30 a.m. because the school chose, closes at noon. Um, theoretically, you could extend that a little bit by authorizing an employee to be present in the office on Friday, November 29th, which is a school holiday, in order to receive mail and get the mail and be there in the event that somebody wanted to still file an application that day. But that would mean making arrangements for an employee to do that and the necessary remuneration. If you push back, you can push back later to choose a new member, but it means that new member can't participate in some of these other decisions, and, um, it may mean having extra meetings. Thursday, the 12th is beyond the debt resolution. That would make the Friday deadline still, I'm sorry, the filing deadline, either Wednesday, November 27th to 11:00 Thursday, or that Friday, or Monday, the 2nd. If you go all the way to the 19th, you're six days before Christmas, you're too late for the debt resolution, and that's the last day you could do it, insofar as filling the vacancy. Having looked at all that, when I met with, uh, Mr. Mashin, Mr. Marnell, we thought that, um, the 9th for the vacancy and the, um, approving the debt resolution seemed to be a way of keeping things moving and still getting participation, and then having the option either that night, or the 12th, or the 19th for a preliminary budget meeting. Sorry to have to throw all that together, but that's so you understand what the schedule and limitations are. And I'll put that all together for next week's board docs.
Questions?
New business, PCCD grant letter of support?
The school board will be asked to approve the acts of the administration in pursuing an initial $35,000 grant pursuant to Act 44 of 2018. Administration is seeking approval of a Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency PCCD grant pursuant to the Act 44 of 2018 for school, for school safety and security, Part A. Meritorious in school safety for $35,000 for salary of one school police officer to support the elementary, middle school complex, and authorize and direct administration to pursue an additional grant of up to $285,000 to provide the following safety improvements. The school district is eligible to apply for an additional grant, Security Part B, competitive, for crisis intervention and safety officer salary plus benefits, safety and security team, elementary intervention list for elementary school and primary center, Giddings protective security services for threat preparedness, NASRO training for school security team, 46 camera packages for upgrading high-traffic areas, including hardware and installation, 56 emergency ladders for egress from second-floor windows in our schools, and seven quick clot bleeding control bags. I would like to thank, uh, Mr. Clara and, um, Mr. Kiefer, uh, they've worked with me. We've already, uh, submitted the grant for $285,000, uh, which was due November 4th. So, uh, we, we are asked if, uh, if the board would please, uh, endorse our efforts, and we have to upload that to the grant, uh, in order to be considered for that grant. So I'd ask if you would please consider that.
Title I, LEA Parent and Family Engagement Policy?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of Title I Local Educational Agency, LEA Parent and Family Engagement Policy, and that is required.
Renew a letter with SPHS?
The board will be asked to consider the renewal of a letter of agreement between Southmoreland School District and Southmoreland, Pennsylvania Human Services Behavioral Health, SPHS Drug and Alcohol Case Management Substance Abuse Assessment Services. We currently have those in place.
Wrestling overnight trip?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the following overnight trips for wrestling matches. Middle school, Waynesburg Junior High Tournament Friday, January 31st, 2020, and at the high school, Sections WPIL Tournament Friday, February 14th, 2020, and the regionals Friday, February 21st, 2020, and the states, March 4th, 5th, and 6th, 2020.
Scottsdale Chamber of Commerce Winter Light Celebration Parade lineup?
The board will be asked to consider granting permission for the Scottsdale Chamber of Commerce to use the school parking lot and driveway to line up for the Winter Light Celebration Parade on Saturday, December 7th at 5:00 p.m. Lineup will start around 4:00 p.m.
2019, 2020 Joint Purchasing Consortium Representative and Alternative?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of Mr. James Marnell, Business Manager, as authorized representative for the WIU Joint Purchasing Consortium, and Mr. Charlie Swink, Director of Transportation, as the alternative, alternate representative.
WIU Joint Purchasing Permission to Advertise?
The board will be asked to consider authorizing permission to advertise to the WIU Joint Purchasing for multi-purpose paper and unleaded gasoline and diesel fuel.
Agreement for Services with Campbell Durant PC for SEA Contract?
The board will be asked to consider approval, to approve an engagement fee agreement for legal services with Campbell Durant PC for upcoming contract negotiations, and that's only on an as-need basis.
Personnel, Kevin Bundridge?
The board will be asked to consider the hiring of Kevin Bundridge in the position of District Interventionalist, Security Person at a salary of $13 per hour plus family benefits at $16,900. benefits at $16,982. And part of that, uh, hopefully will be paid for by our PCCD Part B.
Act 93 salaries for the 2019-20 school year?
The board will be asked to authorize the 2019-2000 cost of living salary increases of 2.5% or $1,900 each for Raquel Sutton and Alex Novikov as per extrapolation from the pay scale for the new hires found in an Act 93 contract, and I also apologize, uh, I was not made aware, uh, until Wednesday morning that, uh, Mrs. Kuhar also has not received, um, her raise, uh, so she would be also, I would ask that you would also consider the same 2.5% raise, which comes out to $2,350.
Play sponsor musical director?
The board will be asked to, asked to consider the hiring of Sean Conway as the high school play sponsor musical director at a supplemental pay of $1,290 for the 2019-2020 school year.
Musical staff?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the following musical staff members for the 2019-2020 musical season, paid for by the Southmoreland School District, would be the class play sponsor producer, Jamie Gore, at a salary of $1,290, and also the class play, play sponsor, as mentioned, and paid for by the high school musical theater boosters, would be the rehearsal accompanist, Brad Henry, at a salary of $1,000.
Sophomore class sponsor, senior high?
The board is asked to consider approving Andrea Hanford as the senior high sophomore class sponsor at a supplemental salary of $853, $53 for the 2019-2020 school year.
Volunteer varsity baseball coach?
The board is asked to consider the approval of Lonnie D. Patoka as a volunteer varsity baseball coach for the 2019-2020 school year. Clearances are on file.
Middle school assistant wrestling coach?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of Zach Bixler as a middle school assistant wrestling coach at a supplemental salary of $2,843 for the 2019-2020 school year, and are the clearances on file. Clearances are on file.
Volunteer varsity wrestling coach?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of Anthony Wise as volunteer varsity assistant wrestling coach. Clearances are on file.
Potential new school van driver recommended by Quest Coach?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of Judith Jaquillard as a potential new school van driver with Quest Coach, Quest Transit. All clearances are on file.
Sabbatical for Restoration of Health?
The board will be asked to consider a semester-long sabbatical for restoration of health for Jamie Lehman, rectally actively beginning on October 31st, 2019, with no break in service.
Motion to adjourn? No moves. Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who made the motion? Who made the motion and Gail seconded it?